The hour of 6:30 having arrived, please stand and we'll place the flag and we'll have to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Will the clerk please read the roll?
Alderman Reitzel?
Present.
Alderman Logan? Alderman Snow? Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Present.
Alderman Shuneman?
Present.
Alderman Kluckler?
Present.
Alderman Folsom?
Present.
Alderman Ebenezer?
Present.
Sixth president, give a quorum.
Thank you. Our first order of business tonight is a public hearing for the annexation of, they're an annexation agreement governing the annexation to the city of Rock Falls, Illinois of a tract of land comprised approximately 26.59 acres. So I declare the public hearing open. If you...
Mayor, ask the city clerk to read into the record the date when notice of the public hearing was published in the Daily Gazette.
City clerk, would you read into the minutes?
Sock Valley newspapers had published the notice for this public hearing on the 29th day of April 2016.
And that before the, 15 days before the date of this hearing.
Yeah, that was the legal requirement of 15 days before the date of this hearing has been complied with. And is there anyone in the audience that have any views they care to express about the annexation agreement? Seeing no one approaching the lectern, we'll declare the hearing closed. And thank you. Now we'll move on to the proclamation. Will the city clerk please read the proclamation?
Proclamation, American Cancer Society Relay for Life Day of Whiteside County. Whereas the Whiteside County unit of the American Cancer Society has planned the 21st Annual Relay for Life, a family-oriented team event for educating the citizens of our communities about cancer and its prevention. And whereas the American Cancer Society Relay for Life honors cancer survivors during the first lap, and the survivors become the celebrities of the event. And whereas the luminaria ceremony offers an opportunity for hundreds of luminaria to be placed around the track, inscribed with the names of loved ones who have lost their battle to cancer, or to honor the survivors of our community. And whereas the American Cancer Society Relay for Life provides a vehicle that maximizes the participation in the fight against cancer at the grassroots community level to provide monies for advocacy, education, research, and patient services. Therefore, as mayor in the Whiteside County of, the city of Rock Falls, Illinois, I along with the council proclaim June 11th, 2016, as American Cancer Society Relay for Life Day of Whiteside County and Rock Falls, Illinois.
You've heard your reading. May I have a motion to accept the proclamation? So moved.
So moved.
Been moved by Dale Reitzel and seconded by Jim Shuneman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Betty? Ann? We'll introduce people who are with you.
Other side, this side.
Other side, Betty.
Push, just push. Come on, come down. This is Michael Wobear. Cheryl Faber.
Carol? I never thought I'd... Well, thank you very much for all your dedication and hard work.
Well, we appreciate you being a part of this.
And this year we will be offenders.
Oh, great.
We're great.
Yeah, I'd like to see some good food.
Did you get one?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'll hang on to it for you. Good night.
At this time, if there's anyone in the audience who would like to approach the council for any reason, please step to the lectern.
Very much.
Seeing no audience requests, we'll move on to Community Affairs by Bethany Bland, President and CEO of the Rock Falls Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening. This week is garage sales for the spring for the Chamber and for Rock Falls and Sterling. This is a community event. We include both towns, both Rock Falls and Sterling. What's most important about this event is we have over 3,000 people who shop at these sales. The majority of them actually come from outside of our communities, so it's a good opportunity to bring them in. One of the comments I get every year, and this comes from people that, you know, may not live in Rock Falls, but they kind of drive through a little bit, they will, every year have people come into our office and they'll tell us, "I had no idea this business was on Route 30 or Second Street." Sometimes that business has been there 20 years. And so what it's really doing is it's getting people out in our community. They're checking out our town, they're buying some gas here, they're buying some food here. You know, our residents, we have 120 sales on our list this year, so this is one of our higher sales that we've had in a very long time. So, pretty exciting. They're getting to make a few extra dollars, hopefully reinvest those back in our community. We encourage everybody who has a sale to also donate any leftover items back to our local thrift stores, really emphasizing all of them. We give them their names, their phone numbers, things like that. So it's kind of an event that flies under the radar unless you're a big garage sailor, but definitely exciting and coming up. I have some maps I'm going to pass out to you guys, just so you get an idea of what they look like. And then, if you have any questions, anyone have any questions about it? Okay, good. Well, it's coming up, it's this weekend, so you're going to see a lot of extra traffic, and now you know why. It's going to be a good deal. We have a couple of things I wanted to share with you as well. Coming up June 1st, the farmer's market is having its grand opening. This is pretty exciting. Last year we saw the farmers really, instead of just farmers, we have some crafters that are included as well, really stepping up and they created their own committee. This year the committee decided that they wanted to charge a $10 fee for everyone that's going to come down there. That donation goes back into marketing the farmer's market and helping promote that so that it will be successful. That's a one-time fee for the whole year. We do have some farmers who have some products available, like rhubarb and asparagus and some herbs that are already ready. And they're going to be selling on Saturdays at this time, but our official grand opening, when everybody's coming down and kicking that off, is in June. We'll also have our Harvest Fest again in late August, so that's pretty exciting. Those are kind of, you know, thinking way down the road there. But the biggest thing that we're working on at the Chamber after the garage sales is our summer splash. Right now I have some exciting news. We have over 30 different groups that are already committed to participate with us. We're looking at probably over 75 by the time that we're done, maybe even more. We really have a lot of people who come down and really participate, a lot of local businesses, a lot of nonprofits. We've even had some individuals from the community who are interested in getting involved this year and doing some kids activities and just really promoting that community spirit that goes along with the event. I hope that you guys saw these, they came out in their utility bills. This is something that the Chamber had put together. We're partnering with tourism and trying to promote all three events that are happening on the riverfront that weekend. And so in our flyer you'll see we have the Bass Pro Shops, Big Cat Quests, we promoted the fireworks, and we also promoted the River Chase right alongside our events. So, just a lot going on that weekend. I want to make sure everybody knows it's coming up, and we're thankful for tourism and everyone who's helping us work together, police department, street department, to make that all happen. The last thing that I wanted to share is that we have a deadline of June 1st for the logo contest for the 150th anniversary, that's this June. We're trying to get that logo established for the 150th anniversary for the city of Rock Falls, so that we can promote those events this summer, raise a few funds, and to be able to start doing some work towards that project. One of the exciting things that's going on with that, we're encouraging anyone and everyone to apply. We have information on the Chamber's website about how to submit a logo. But we were able to get high school students before the year was out. The top students in the class were encouraged to submit something, so I received five logos from the high school just the other day. And then the mayor is working on putting together a committee that will vote on those, and then I believe the 150th Anniversary Committee will also kind of have a chance to review some of that, and we'll do some promotion about that coming soon. But June 1st is the deadline, and then if you just go to rockfallschamber.com, we have a lot of information on that up there. So, I covered a lot of stuff kind of quickly. Does anybody have any questions about any of that?
Only one remark. My wife today uncovered her assessment centennial cookbook.
Oh.
It was back from the 125th anniversary, and a lot of those cooks aren't around anymore.
Well, we'll have to try some of those recipes. Maybe that would be a good fundraiser for us to get some money in the kitty for that project.
Yeah, it's something that has to be done rather quickly though, I think.
Yeah, Robin and I could do a cook-off or something and try some new things. Sound good? I think we have some people who are interested in trying this food, so we'll give it a shot. But, yeah, just kind of getting that on the radar, that the 150th anniversary is coming up, we have that logo contest. Anybody else have any questions or comments for us?
Just keep up the good work, Bethany.
Well, thank you.
Sounds like it's going to be a great summer.
Yeah, we're looking forward to it, for sure, for sure. All right, well, I'm going to leave some of these up here along with some garage sale maps, in case anyone in the audience or anyone wants to pick them up. They're kind of a hot commodity, they officially come out tomorrow, so you get them a day early.
Thank you very much for your dedication. Is there anyone in the council that wants to remove any items from the consent agenda, I hope not? We have two of them. If there aren't, I'd like to have a motion to receive the consent agenda.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded that the consent agenda be passed. Would the clerk please read the roll?
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kluckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Alderman Ebenezer?
Yes.
Six aye.
The bills are paid. We have ordinance in the second reading and the adoption, which will be the approval of ordinance 2016-2263.
We have one, one first reading. We have one first reading.
Okay. I had an earlier agenda than the city clerk had, so we do have ordinance in the first reading, approval of ordinance 2016-2255, adding chapter 5.5, chapter 16, regulating bond brokers.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that approval of the ordinance 2016-2255 be given. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, moving on to where I was. The adoption of 2016-2263, annexing territory into the city of Rock Falls.
Make a motion to approve 2016-2263, annexing territory into the city of Rock Falls.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2016-2263. Will the clerk please read your roll?
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kluckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Alderman Ebenezer?
Yes.
Six aye.
Okay, number two, adoption of ordinance 2016-2264, amending section 141E, general penalty continuing violations.
I'll make a motion to approve 2016-2264.
Second. Okay, Troy, seconded it, and will the clerk please read your roll?
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kluckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Alderman Ebenezer?
Yes.
Six aye.
And then adoption of ordinance 2016-2265, authorizing the lease of personal property for public purposes to international model 7300 four-by-two flower trucks.
I'll make a motion for the acceptance of ordinance 2016-2265.
Second the motion.
I have a question. Maybe for you, Jim. I've never been exposed to the situation where we have a mayor pro town. Does Alderman Kuhlmeier act as an alderman?
Yes.
Still has full voting powers?
He's still an alderman. He's just presiding over the meeting. But he still has his voting rights as an alderman. Because normally, see, the mayor himself would not vote except in limited situations.
That's why I was wondering.
If he was actually the mayor, but he's not the mayor, he's just the acting mayor.
Anybody else have any questions? Will the clerk please read your roll?
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kluckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Alderman Ebenezer?
Yes.
Six aye.
Okay, city administrator, Alvin Blacker?
I suppose it wouldn't fly if I said nothing tonight, your honor.
Huh?
I'm just joking. Okay.
That's the best laugh we got.
I was looking here and seeing two items at least.
Seeing if everybody was paying attention. All right. First of all, it was brought to the Public Works Public Property Committee by the Sock Valley Landlords Association that they would like to do a citywide cleanup day here in Rock Falls. What we would be looking at is them using, which we would need approval for, the riverfront parking lot that's directly south of the patio area there, the slab, and waiving their fee for them to use that location. In working on a lot of the details, I've been working very closely with Sharon Simister, and the Sock Valley Landlords Association has done a tremendous amount of work as far as getting people in town, such as Jeff Moore has offered his services to dispose of up to 200 tires. And as you know, and anybody who's ever done a canal cleanup day, they do drag tires out of the canal. We find them in ditches and whatnot around town. They've worked with O'Reilly's to be able to accept oil from residents. One of the big things that we've been dealing with is television disposal. As most of you know, things have changed, televisions can no longer go to, excuse me, they can no longer go to landfills. They charge, I believe it's 25 to 35 cents per pound for a TV, and one of our few collection areas around here is self-help enterprises. Self-help has kindly offered to bring a vehicle over that would act as the reciprocal for the televisions if residents brought those in. However, they still have to pay for those to be disposed of. What the Sock Valley Landlords Association is asking for is for the city to donate $1,000 towards the disposals, disposal of those TVs. In Public Property Committee, we discussed how we would do this to ensure that it was Rock Falls residents that were going to be able to benefit from this. And the talk then that we would like them to produce a utility bill, whether it's an ICOR bill or a city municipal bill, whatever, just showing that they're a Rock Falls resident. And we've had them, you know, televisions are a problem, the street department, we've paid to have televisions hauled off that people dumped in our, out to the sewer plant and other places that we've now since put under video surveillance, so that has curbed some of it. But they're becoming a real problem around town because nobody wants to pay to have them disposed of. So, I guess I'm asking your permission to waive the fee for them using that parcel of land as rental, and then for us to donate $1,000 to this. And as such, I have written a letter and asked for a grant from the Walmart Distribution Center to help with this also, which would be great because then we would actually be able to take more TVs. So, any questions that any of you have?
With the council's pleasure.
I'd like to make a motion for the acceptance of Sock Valley Landlords Association to waive the RB&amp;W district fee and a donation of $1,000 from the city for the disposal of televisions.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that approval be given to a recommendation from the Public Works Public Property for Citywide Cleanup Day sponsored by Sock Valley Landlords Association to waive the RB&amp;W district fee and a donation of $1,000 from the city for the disposal of TVs. The floor is open for questions, and the only observation I'd make is, I think that the $1,000 will be paid back rather quickly in the cost of doing away the tires and the TVs.
The one thing I forgot to, the proposed cleanup date is June 4th, from 9 to 1, I believe.
What's the date on that?
June 4th.
We appreciate the landlords very much for doing this. Thank you.
And that'll be at the RB&amp;W district, right?
Correct.
Clerk, please read your roll.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kluckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Alderman Ebenezer?
Yes.
Six aye.
Okay, you're up again.
All right. I'm asking for approval upon recommendation from the Finance Committee for bonding services for riverfront development from Robert W. Baird &amp; Company, 305th Avenue, Suite 200, Naperville, Illinois. In Finance Committee, we reviewed, and we have a representative here, Mr. Stefan Roberts from Robert W. Baird, who presented to the Finance Committee the options on the bond issue. The presentation showed for $2 million and $2.5 million, and for one-year interest and/or two-years interest only. It is my recommendation that the council seek $2 million at one-year interest only.
Make a motion to approve the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Do we have a second? I'll second it then. Clerk, please read your roll.
Alderman Reitzel?
Rescues, please.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kluckler?
I was trying to get in here that we didn't have a chance for discussion.
Oh.
Oh, that's right.
Okay. Push top the roll. Alderman Kluckler, yes.
I guess I have a problem with, with not necessarily the bonding, but the quoted Phase One development at this time. I think we should be delaying this for at least another year to see where our economic development companies are recommending type of things. It would also give us a chance to exactly see where our funding for the TIF district, the amount off of the motel, what its assessment would be. I think there's, we're up in the air with too many variables that could change and not knowing where they are, so I think this is the wrong time to be doing this.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Kluckler. The fact is that this has been under process for years and years, and our RDA was in the process of trying to work out a riverfront development, and whether there's a hotel there or not, it needs to be done, and it's been successive administrations that have okayed that, and a number of councils have approved that as well. So, that's the only statement I would have to make. So, we approve. Clerk, can you continue the roll?
Alderman Kluckler?
No.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Alderman Ebenezer?
Additional question?
Sure.
Statement, I guess, with regards to this. Looking at a map and seeing what we're doing here, my problem is that I don't know if it leads anywhere. I know we're trying to develop that area down there, but I, if I'm mistaken, I believe there's money in there that could be used for roads, correct? Something, anything that could be, that we're going to pay for this auto, can any of that money be used for roads?
Are you saying they want to use the TIF money for roads?
Anything that could be used for roads, I think we need to focus on that right now rather than picking up a walkway that pretty much leads nowhere. I mean, I would like to see more businesses down here before we develop that further. This is my problem.
Sure. What I can tell you is that what you're talking about is about the development and planning of the riverfront. What I can tell you is that since I've been here, this is the direction that they've directed me to go with it, and years prior to that, actually. So, all I'm addressing tonight is where they've directed me to take this with the bonding for Phase One.
Okay, so the bonding, we're only going to allow us to pay for the...
No, you're only voting, you're not voting on a bond issue, you're voting to engage Robert W. Baird &amp; Company as underwriters to present a proposal for...
Just to present.
Yeah, but there's not, you're not voting on issuing bonds to them. It's only to engage a firm as underwriter to come up with proposals for them. In terms of the use of the money, I'm assuming that there's already been a plan in place, I don't know specifically off the top of my head, but there's been some kind of a plan in place. For use of the money in the TIF, though, money generated in the TIF district can only be used within the TIF district. You can't use that to build streets throughout the city. And the money from the hotel tax that will be generated from that hotel can only be used to induce overnight visitors to the city, to promote overnight visits and tourism within the city. That's all that could be used.
So, none of the money that's coming from either the bonds or this can be used for roads?
No. I don't, I think it's not the plan for the bond money to be used, because the plan was as I understood it, to be used, to use the revenue generated within the TIF district, and that will be from the property taxes that are paid by the hotel and any other businesses that are located within the TIF district for those tax revenues that are dedicated for TIF to be used to pay toward the bond issue. And then also a part of the hotel revenues, tax, is that going to be used also or not?
The hotel motel tax, just from the Holiday Inn, which is within the TIF.
The hotel motel tax, that hotel would also be used as revenue to pay this bond issue.
But at this point, we don't have any idea what that's going to...
Yeah, I can do...
Any projections on what that's going to bring in?
Yes, as we discussed in Finance, I went off the comps of the Country Inn and Suites. Previously, it had been assessed at just over $3 million, and it paid $101,000 a year property taxes. Now that will change because it was just recently sold in December for $5 million. Our township assessor has not completed the assessment on the hotel, but it was a $7 million hotel, so I'm saying it will be comparable with what the Country Inn is saying. So even if we stay at the conservative $101,000 on property taxes, hotel motel tax, if we stay the same, Country Inn and Suites brings in just under $105,000 a year on hotel motel tax. So I take that back from the amount of rooms they have, down to the 68 rooms that are in the new Holiday Inn Express and Suites. So we can conservatively look at that at $65,000 to $70,000 a year. So, we can conservatively look at that at $65,000 to $70,000 a year. So, I'm trying to stay at a payment that's under $170,000 a year so we know that we will have enough cushion to pay for the, that will be the revenue source to pay for the bonds.
Do you have any idea when the assessment might come in? It moves up?
I have not been given that information by the assessor. The book has to be to Whiteside County in June.
Is there, one more. Is there any way we can wait until that assessment comes in before we do all this stuff? To make sure that we have our nuts on the road before we start?
Well, there's quite a period of time that will go by. I mean, it'll, it's up to you guys. I'm not going to tell you that. If you guys choose to wait, you wait. I mean, you guys are the ones in the driver's seat here as far as if you want to wait, then that's what you should do.
Yeah, well, one further comment is I would think that we should proceed sooner than later because we already have the hotel there, and this is for the public area of the city. So, it isn't only just for the hotel, it'll be for the use of our citizens as well. And as far as whether it connects up with anything, the ultimate goal is to get it to the lower dam and get it to the upper dam. But in order to do that, since we lost some of our funding through grants, we've had to go this direction in order to make the possibility, so.
How much have we lost from grants?
A $400,000 grant that we were supposed to put into effect was withdrawn from us.
It's from the state?
It's on hold.
Yeah, it's on hold.
Is there any more from the state that we're not possibly getting?
Actually, we had started to work in conjunction with Willett Hoffman on a tourism grant that was, actually could pay for brick and mortar projects such as we're looking at, that is up to $1 million. However, we put that on hold because until the state passes their budget, the proposed budget that they had on the Internet last year had some of the current Parks Recreation Tourism Grants funded, and then they had some of those defunded with new ones in place that they were moving that funding over to. So, right now, we don't even know what grants that we can write until they pass a budget and solidify which grants they're funding. So, we're just in a perpetual hold with that. When we get to the phase where, I mean, right now with Phase 1, we're looking at completing around the hotel area as we gave them our word that we would do that path around there, and then there should be enough to put out a bid to do the entertainment venue, put out a bid hopefully late summer, early fall for that to be completed. As far as the public restrooms, the water feature, other things in the park, we're not looking at doing those right now. We're hoping to get the complete bike path done in the district and all the sidewalks and the entertainment venue.
Mayor, can I just say a couple of things? One, this is all, we're all referring to the hotel here, but this was a project that was put in, well, in motion well before the hotel ever came to town. This was a project for green space that maybe was attractive to the hotel, but it didn't have anything to do with the hotel. The hotel is now in place where it's going to help pay for what goes on there, but it was never designed to enhance the hotel. It was designed as a green space for the residents and citizens of Rock Falls. That's what it was there for, and to talk about the hotel is fine, but this project was in place long before the hotel ever came on scene. Now, I'm glad the hotel's going to help pay for it, but that's not what, you know, the beneficiary of this green space is going to be. It's going to be the citizens of Rock Falls that are going to benefit from this.
Anybody further?
Well, I'll just go one step further. I think there is a, you know, Jim's comment may be 100% true. However, we've changed from grant money to something where the, you know, the citizens of Rock Falls could be held responsible to pay this $2 million bond off if the riverfront does not develop as anticipated. And, you know, we're seeing the very first development in that area, and I think we should be conservative and see where that development goes. I mean, when these things hit, we need to look down the road a little bit further. I mean, we've got the limestone project that's got huge funds borrowed from. We've got two parcels of land south of Rock Falls that are multimillion dollar notes that are, you know, at some time are going to kick in more than interest on there, and, you know, nobody's going to suffer if we wait another year to see where development goes and look at it at that time.
I don't think we can solve all the development problems tonight. I think what we have on the floor is the employment of Baird for bonding information, so.
So, we're voting on just information, we're not tying ourselves to anything. Is this one of the look at it?
And they'll report back to us.
No, you'd still have to vote to approve the bond issue. You're authorizing them to proceed. That's what I understand the motion to be, that you're authorizing them to proceed as underwriters to develop a bond proposal for submission for vote. And you're going to incur some costs, though, as a result of it, because they're going to have to engage bond attorneys, and there will be some expense that you'll do, even if you decide later on that you're not going to sell the bonds and not going to authorize the bonds.
I would say that as somebody who's going to have to start working with developers and working on this riverfront, if we don't have something to show them down there, because I'm not going to be able to, with all due respect to what Alderman Shuneman said, it is, it does have to do with the hotel. We gave them our word, and one of the only reasons they picked that location is because we were going to build a destination next to them. And I'm not going to be able to sit there. I need to know what the council wants moving forward because it's putting me in a very awkward position as far as that riverfront. This has been the plan since I was hired here five years ago, and I'm going out and have appointments with developers. Do I tell them there's going to be a park there, or do I tell them they're going to be looking at that beautiful view across the river, and that's it? I need to know. I mean, I have meetings starting Sunday night, and I need to know that I'm not going there and speaking things that aren't going to come to fruition.
I think we're at the point now, Troy, where we can ask for the vote.
Yeah, I know.
Clerk, the results of the vote?
Three aye.
Jim, is that, did we acquire a majority of the council?
That's not a majority. Okay, then the motion is failed. Thank you for coming, Stefan. Okay, moving on, then we go to Eric Cardini, City Clerk.
First item, I have his approval, the recommendation from the Finance Insurance Committee for liability work compensation insurance premium for the 2016-2017 years to Municipal Insurance Cooperative Agency in the amount of $447,151.
Do we have a motion?
This is for all of the city's work comp and liability insurance, vehicle insurance, such as all that stuff.
I make the motion to accept the MICA proposal.
Okay, do we have a second? It's been moved and seconded approval be made to the recommendation for the Finance Insurance Committee for the liability and workman's compensation insurance premium for 2016 and 2017 to the Municipal Insurance Cooperative Agency MICA in the amount of Please call the roll.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Alderman Ebenezer?
Yes.
Six aye. Second item is approval of the recommendation from the Finance Committee for Actuarial Services to MWM Consulting Group, 55 East Jackson Street, 1,000 Chicago, Illinois, about $12,000.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion to engage MWM Consulting Group for our fire and police actuary services.
Been moved by Alderman Kleckler, and do we have a second? I'll second it then. To approval of the recommendation for the Finance Committee for Actuarial Services of MWM Consulting Company Group, 55 East Jackson, Suite 100, Chicago, Illinois, $12,000. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Alderman Ebenezer?
Yes.
Six aye. I had nothing else to make, Your Honor.
Mr. Reese?
Yes, Your Honor. In the recodification of the municipal code, I noted just recently that a section of the former liquor control ordinance, which contained the restrictions upon who was or was not allowed to obtain a liquor license within the city, had been substantially altered by Munich Code when they published the new revised code. And one of the things that was removed from there was a requirement that any corporation or limited liability company must have a resident manager in order to be entitled to get a liquor license within the city. That provision had been in the municipal code liquor ordinance for the last at least 45 years, because I've been in town that long and has been there that long. I strongly recommend that you ask me to revise the ordinance to incorporate that once again in the liquor code in the city, but it takes a motion from the council directing me to do that. So, asking if you want that done or not? In other words, put the requirements for getting a liquor license back to the way they were prior to the recodification by Munich Code. I think it was probably inadvertent on the part of Munich Code, but they did it nonetheless, so.
I think it's really important for a resident manager to be a citizen of Rock Falls so that our police would have someone to contact in the event of a problem. Having served as liquor commissioner, I can tell you that having someone that you can contact that represents licensee is a lot better than having to drive to Cal or Decal or someplace else, and the resultant delay would not be good. So, I would, my recommendation that, and also my motion, that the city attorney draw on ordinance to put that back into our liquor code. Clerk, please read the roll.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Alderman Ebenezer?
Yes.
Six aye.
That's all I have, Your Honor.
Our next one, Brian Frickenstein, but I don't think that we'll continue.
Your Honor, we need to pull that off the agenda because we can't accept a bid that we can't pay for.
Because of the outcome of the last vote, or the vote for the Baird. We'll go to department heads, and starting with Water Reclamation, Mr. Cox?
Nothing, sir.
Electric? Okay. Police Chief, Camino? Fire Chief, Gary Cook? Building Inspector, Mark Shering?
What am I, John?
Water Head Padilla.
Ha ha.
Yes, Your Honor. Two items tonight. Through the Public Works, request approval for two builder boxes from Lee Jensen Sales out of Crystal Lake in the amount of $2,390. This gives us a lot of flexibility to be able to set up various ways of trench boxes, whether we have two holes open or we got to stay in the trench box because we have areas where the water makes 12-foot deep. And if we had to slope it, it would take probably from house to house. So, with these builder boxes, we can keep it less expensive and safe.
I make a motion for the approval of the purchase of two builder boxes from Lee Jensen Sales in Crystal Lake for the amount of $23,900.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the purchase of two builder boxes for $23,900. Please call the roll.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Alderman Ebenezer?
Yes.
Six aye.
And request approval for our 2016-2017 meter changeout program of meters over 2,000 units out in distribution. This is going to be anywhere from 5 eighths to, I think, inch and a half meters that are over 2,000 units. And we're purchasing from Ferguson Waterworks in Decal, Illinois at $27,939.49.
Make a motion for the approval of the purchase of meters from Ferguson Waterworks in Decal in the amount of $27,939.49.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded that we approve the purchase of meters from Ferguson Waterworks in the amount of $27,939.49.
Are our old meters just scrap value?
Scrap value. Right.
Please read the roll.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Alderman Ebenezer?
Yes.
Six aye.
And just a quick note, myself and Greg Johnson from the Electoral Department attended the scholarship night last night to award the $1,000 scholarship between the Water Department Electric and, and we're hoping that we can have the awardee show up June 7th meeting. And I'll have to break on all the education we did for the year. Okay? That's all I have.
Thank you. Tourism?
She's excused tonight. She's excused tonight.
And Utility Office Diane Hattfield, Diane?
Hi, Diane.
Okay. We'll go to ward reports now. Alderman Reitzel?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Nothing for me. Alderman Shuneman?
Nothing.
Alderman Kleckler?
Nothing.
Alderman Folsom?
Nothing tonight.
Alderman Ebenezer?
As I spoke before, I've been talking to a lot of residents, and the number one concern that people seem to have is the quality of our roads. And I'm just kind of wondering what we can do or what we are doing on that.
We have a program set up now for the roads we're going to do for the next five years. You're on Public Works, if you attended the meeting, you'd know what was happening. We're trying different ways of doing roads now to try and save money, try and get as much bang for the buck as we can get. Seem to be working pretty well in some things. Trying to do the best we can. If you got a, if you talk to Robbins, he can give you a list. It's available to everybody about what the roads are. We have planned for five years.
Okay. I have no more to make. And we will be going into Executive Session 1, Section 2C1 Personnel Review of City Administrator And any action taken from the Executive Session will be done in Open Session at the end.
We'll need a motion to go into Executive Session.
So moved.
If it's moved, do we have a second? Second. To- To go into Executive Section, Section 2C1 Personnel Review of City Administrator Contract, please call the roll.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Cluckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Alderman Ebenezer?
Yes.